Welcome back. Hopefully you enjoyed lunch, got a chance to decompress for a sec. When we left off, we were talking about vision and mission. So everybody reflected, we reflected on our own. So take a minute or two, go back to what you wrote down. And so what we're writing is any ideas that you have to potentially refresh the mission and vision. What might you change if anything? Or if you just have thoughts about the mission and vision that you want to share with the group. So go back to that, check back in with what you wrote. And then talk, talk with the people around you. And then we're gonna come back together and just share what kind of ideas have come into, into the light, probably, with it out.
Okay, so, I didn't write anything.
I'm glad you did.
I don't know what that's called.
I think it's more important to, as a group, understand what the vision and mission is.
Like if we're gonna refresh all this, then refresh ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like if we're refreshing it all, let's refresh it.
Theory was on the way.
Yeah.
I'd change progressive to proactive.
Or it doesn't even need to be reworked.
Yeah, personal investment. Well, I think we really do need to be proactive.
That's right.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. On the vision, I was thinking, since we, no one can complain, seem to say what world class is.
Yeah.
I think it may be exceptional.
Well, I was gonna say.
To be a world, to be an exceptional system.
If you walk into a school, you can ask us. What is a world class school?
I wrote an exceptional school system for all students to succeed.
Oh, good for you. Well, two out of three, sorry.
No, sorry.
Cameron said it's on here.
Take thirty seconds to wrap up.
I was gonna write down. Oh, I just put world class schools, diverse learning. And, and then, because I just forgot what was, you know, achieves highest potential E word is high graders.
I like the bad in the students, because mesh is really good.
Well, yeah. High, high.
All right, let's come back together. What were, if we could share some of the highs from your conversations. What came up in your conversations? What might you wanna change if anything? Or what do we need to be thinking about and considering?
I was just saying like a refresh on all of it. Because if you, if you do walk into a classroom in most schools, the teachers have a very hard time defining what world-class school system is. So if it's all over our branding and in the hallways, then the educator should be able to give us the definition. But that can look a lot of ways to a lot of different people. So I just jotted down an exceptional school system for all students to succeed. As a vision statement, because we do include student and mission. I just, I just like that it match, you know, student and student. It's like that it blends. He had a different E word, so he got voted out, because he had the same E word. So two out of three went.
What was your E word?
Was excellent. Oh, excellent, excellent.
That's too hard, son.
Excellent, you're excellent, sorry.
So, but, but, but what's your, what's your encouraging us to think about is centering on students? Like bringing, bringing students into the statements, right? And then, just going back to our conversation about what do we mean by world class? And if we talk to anybody in the organization, can they, can they speak to that? Okay. Yeah.
So I, I like the simple statement. But I do think we have to explain it.
Okay.
So the explanation I wrote is students have no limitations on their opportunity to learn. I should say, all students have no limitations on the opportunity to learn. And a universal opportunity to join the world socially, culturally, and economically.
Yeah, to parallel what she said, I think, you know, we're still gonna have to define exceptional.
Yes, yeah.
So world-class can be defined, Michael and I were talking at the break, about a diploma and. A diploma and an AS, a diploma and an AA, a diploma and an industry certification, a diploma and also a CNA, right? It was funny, because the health is here doing the same thing. They're refreshing their strategic plan. They're doomed, because they have to come back tomorrow and they don't want to. We decide, I told them we had a better model, we started out a little. So I mean, I think, you know, I'm, you know, I just, I think we just have to define it. So that people can explain it.
So.
Yeah.
So we kinda got some measuring ideas. And we also talked about changing the words doesn't matter, but having a collective understanding of what those words mean. I think I mentioned in our one-on-one at NASA, if you ask the guy who was sweeping the floors, what are you doing? He'll say putting a man on the moon. We can ask our teachers, what are we doing? And we don't have, we don't have a standard response. So we don't have a buy-in from everybody in the organizations, and that's huge. So changing the words doesn't.
Doesn't mean that people don't know what it means, and what it means for them.
I don't know what it means. I mean, I think if the, if the eight of us know what it means, then we're all, we're all working. And then we can get everybody else to understand what it means, but what does it mean to us?
It doesn't mean anything unless it lives beyond the three-ring binder on the shelf. So long-term strategic planning, that then impacts what a school's SAC does. And how an SAC plans at an individual school site to meet the goal. So whatever our vision statement or mission statement becomes, becomes an activity for that school advisory council. And the teachers and the team, so. But it's really important that this plan live beyond just what the board and the superintendent and the other voices that will lend to this. What we create, it's gotta live beyond the binder.
So I wrote world-class, because I picked out the words that were important. So I put world-class equals diverse learning. And then for my, for my other one, I wrote achieves highest potential, to pick up, pull in those words out, equals high graduation rate. Because that's your measurement. If you don't have kids graduating, we're not, we're not successful. So that was what, how, what I added. I mean, that's what I took from it.
But it has to be all children graduating.
Of course.
So it's not, it's a hundred percent graduation rate.
Well, high, my, not just graduation. My other word, high is there, I'm sorry, I don't know if I said it. High graduation rate.
Yeah.
Exceeding, exactly, you know, so.
So, couple things, so as I'm listening. So one is, we have a, it seems like defining what we mean by world-class and how do we measure it, that is, like unequivocally, yes, we have to do that. Another consideration could be offering, because some of you already wrote down, like, or beginning to like form ideas about what world-class could mean. And so one, one option could be, Chris and I are gonna take your notes, you know, either way. We can clean it up, give you a little bit of time to like think about it, give it back to you, right? And then we can say, okay, after your feedback, after you have time to step away from today, this is where we wanna be, like here's another round of feedback. And then, again, Chris and I can take that and then give it to the different advisory groups to weigh in. What do you mean by, this is what we think about world-class, based on what we heard from you, based on what we know what's going on in the economy and locally. Give us some thoughts on this, right? And then we can bring that back to you, either before the May event or during the May event. Because, so for example, like you spoke about, like, community, right? Universal opportunity to join us socially, culturally, and economically, right? And so by world-class, it's like, are students prepared to engage like at, in those levels and those dimensions? Would just be one example. We can have people give, give some input and feedback. Because who knows, right? Like there, there could be people, very likely, people are gonna weigh in and say, oh, well, we didn't think about this, or you didn't think about that. And some labels could go off, right? But really, what we wanted to do was kinda test and push, where is there alignment and where, where is there not, right? It definitely feels like, yes, defining world-class. And also, I, I keep coming back to students. Like this is all for the purpose of what? I certainly understand, this is an organizational mission and vision, absolutely. This is an organization. And who is the organization it serves us, right? Okay. So, we're, we're not trying to make any decisions though. Again, this was more about the conversation. So if you could actually just pass down the posts, it's appreciated. We're gonna collect those. And then we're gonna have you reflect on this, not, again, not today, but in between today and when we reconvene in May. And then, we are gonna wanna get these ideas out to the different advisory groups.
And I think it is good, because I know a lot of times when people come to the board meetings, they love saying that word to us. This is a world-class.
Right.
So we absolutely do need to know what that means. Because they love saying that.
Well, I think that same task exists for us in the community engaged around the word potential, in the mission statement. Who's potential? There, the student's potential, based upon whose, whose version of that, right? And there's a post-it note I was making all along, because like if you ask, occasionally I write post-its notes, but I fear you're asking me a question I don't know the answer to it. So one of the things I wrote down today was Naviance. So how, how does Naviance help us as a tool to help a child and his parents, or her parents, define what their potential is? How do we use a PSAT in our middle school level to help determine a map of science or language course of action regarding schedule that allows that student to meet their goals? We have some words that I think we have to, have to find a way of operationalize.
To like, bring them to life, absolutely, right?
Just, just as an aside, y'all gotta go back and watch the Jack presentation on Naviance. Oh my gosh, the potential there for our kids. And I'm looking at you, because your kids are coming at that age. It's just gonna be, it's gonna be a game changer for kids and parents. As far as I'm concerned, I think it's gonna be a wonderful tool. So, sorry.
What was the date on that, though? That you said watch it? I don't know if you did, I forgot. I think I wrote it down, but.
I don't even know, today's date is.
We'll, we'll keep these ideas, Naviance, right, or Dr. Bernier, like some of the ideas that you're sharing about how like PSAT scores. We're gonna do a values exercise, and after that, we're getting into, beginning to define priority areas. Naturally, initiatives and metrics are gonna come out. We need to capture those too. Like there's, there's always a reason we shouldn't do that today. But just know that like that's, that's how we're rounding out the day. So we're, we're getting there. Before that, though, I'm gonna, Chris is gonna jump in and then lead us through this values reflection exercise before we get to priorities.
So just to ground us in high level, where we're heading, talk about the vision, talk about mission. So we wanna spend a little bit of time doing the same thing, just having a conversation around the values that are currently included in our plan. And that can help us towards the end of the day, when we start to define some priorities. And so, for this conversation, here's just some starting questions to consider. And I'll reference this slide as you jump into some independent reflection time, and then we'll also jump into some conversation as well. But some questions to consider as you're going through is, what values are we living? How do you know? Where do we have room for growth? And how might we adapt our values to help us realize our mission and vision? And so all of you should have a copy of those values. Can I see, or do you have it over there? Yep, I've got theirs. You don't have one, just let me know. And the structure we're gonna use is, call this sort of like a note catcher for folks. And it's called the Bullseye Reflection Tool. I have copies here for you. What we're gonna ask you to do is just go ahead and capture your name on your note sheet. And there's gonna be a section for each value. And you'll see it builds out from one to 10. So, question is, place an X word near the center if the district is hitting the mark with this value. So yes, it lives, it is here. And then place it further away if it's not. This can be a conversation starter as we jump into it. So I'll give.
So you want us to walk up there and come next?
No, 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 no. You'll have your own reflection tool come in your way, right?
Right here.
So the closer to the center, the better we are.
Oh, you want us to draw?
Just put it down there.
Yep.
This is the measurement as we're looking at it today.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Two, three, four, five, six. She wants.
Okay.
No, no, that was the extra, sorry.
Looks like most folks we've wrapped up in the meeting would love to.
You made a statement.
Start a, any of these? Quick conversation, based on questions you're seeing on Peter, values that we're living, how do you know? Where do we have room for growth? Would love to hear from a couple folks.
So, you know, I basically said we're halfway there in every regard, with the exception of accountability. I think the fact that we have stated these values for some period of time, we are, we are actually striving. But I don't think we've got where we expect to be. I think the area where we are weakest is accountability. Because that's, that's really, that requires a lot of data-driven work. And not, we have analysis paralysis, but we get data-rich, analysis-poor. And we know that we need to be, we need the old people accountable. People are beginning to understand that accountability is a value of this organization. But we simply haven't got the processes caged and set everything in place to do that. But I think with respect to everything else, we, we, these are important values. And we are articulating them, and we are trying to live them. I think that we've improved significantly in terms of integrity since Dr. Bernier took over the super presidency. I think that he sets that bar for everybody. And I never have to question what comes out of his mouth and whether it's true. I think that we could do better in terms of high expectations and belief in students. I think a rising tide lifts all boats. And I don't think that we always expect what our students can, can do. Like we should expect more from them, because they are more capable than we give them credit for. Despite some of the challenges we've talked about in this room today, our, our students can do better if we just expect more from them.
Setting that bar.
Well, there's a gap between ability and achievement, both ways. Correct. And I will say that accountability was the lowest marking for me as well.
Me too.
Me too.
I'm sorry?
Seems like the theme of accountability was one of the lowest. In terms of the highest, mentioned integrity. Any other high marks? Ones that we put closer to the center?
No, I, I wanna say about integrity, while I respect Ms. Patric's comments about Dr. Bernier, I think we're talking about the whole organization. And I don't believe as a, as an entity, we are, that is a value that is viewed as something that we achieved the level we would like to set, maybe if you could say.
See, one of my higher ones was actually belief in students. So that also is partly maybe a parent perspective from my, from what I've experienced in the system as a parent, so. But I feel that's a higher mark, at least for me. So accountability, integrity for me as a system are the lower marks, the more I believe in. Looking at it like Ms. Morgan said, as a whole, the district.
I had the same thing. My highest was belief in students. I believe that the students have that, we should set that bar for them. They, they will achieve their dream if we guide them in that. And so I believe you have to have that belief in that, you believe in them until they're not longer here. I mean, and they're no longer our students. And you still wanna believe in them after that. So I don't believe you stop believing. How about that? And maybe there's a song. But anyways, my, my other, my other thing, though, is professionalism. I don't think we, we treat our staff professional enough. And that is something that's a whole, and it's not just us. It's, I don't think, as a nation now, we're treating our, our, our teachers and staff as professional as they should be treated. And, and I don't know that it's necessarily us, but that, that perceptive, it's, perceptive is out there. And I think that we need to reinforce the professionalism. And if we have to be that champion in Lee County first, and we have, we set that mark, let's do it. I'm, I'm all for that, for our, for our staff. Because I think others will follow.
My lowest score was high expectations. I still think we've set high enough goals for our employees and for our students, I think.
We do or we do not, I'm sorry.
We do not. I think we can do a little better job on that. Unlike Ms. Morgan, I, I don't have us halfway to everything. I have us about two-thirds to everything. I think we're doing a little bit better. But there's room for improvement on every single one of them. So I just, my, my worst score was for high expectations. So I think we need to, everybody know, I think we're starting to do that, even with the listen up, speak up, it's an expectation. I know Dr. Bernier's meeting with all his staff and setting expectations all the time with them. That's, he had good movement in that direction. But I think that's, they don't know what's expected of them, they're not gonna achieve it.
I also think that how the board, the board conducts itself, respect professionalism and high expectations, has a lot to do with how we grow. And how quickly we can grow in that area. Just, you know, evidence in the last six months or so suggests that. There's a lot of opportunity there, rest of growth, because the model is there.
New salmon piece gave me a nice segue. I do think we have belief in students until I really looked at the definition and was comparing it to the data we saw today. So that's, I, because I, I think if it's you just asked me on the street, does your organization believe in students? I immediately would say yes. And I, because we do. Both that definition speaks to instruction designed, and we have some data that we saw today that potentially, can be one lens, potentially shows us an avenue where we don't. I have this kind of all over the place. But my lowest rated category, and I just feel like I wanna express it so you know a little bit more how I think, is excellence. Because until we can do integrity, high expectations, professionalism, accountability, and belief in students really, really well, then I don't know how we label ourselves excellent. Because that's a, it's a really high standard. That's just, that's the one I rated lowest, but I wanted to explain the reason why. Because I incorporated all the other factors. When we're doing all of those really well, then we'll also be excellent.
Yeah, Dr. B, I think it's important to grounding our boards in the definitions of each value. And I do see connections between like belief in students, where a lot of us have rated high, and then high expectations. But how those two are tied together. The one, we have as low as high expectations, but we do believe in our students. That's a really good point. Any other comments about this initial exercise in terms of our six values? So like we said, this was just a, a starting point for us, to take a sense of what values, where, where we each fall, and start the conversation. Towards the rest of the afternoon, we are gonna pivot now to talking about priorities. And so, we're gonna ground ourselves back in this visual. And with that, wanna keep up the road?
Yeah.
I can tap you?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, and these pages, you just have your name on it. We'll collect at the end.
Can I have one more thing before you guys transition? Speak up, listen up will help us with all of these. It has real application to helping us reinforce what some of these expectations are. Because we can use those phrases even beyond workplace harassment and other things, and listening to people, and how you create that culture. But how do these fit into that same type of culture, I think, fit nicely. Appreciate the work you guys did a couple of weeks ago. It was a week ago? Seems like a couple of weeks ago. A week ago, related to that, to that work. And it's a priority for us this summer and into the fall, to get it, not only just trained, but start to embed it.
Like, and live it, yeah, of course, and operationalize it. Well, you know, and it, it comes back to also, like Ms. Morgan, what you were saying about, yes, there is, like with Dr. Bernier coming, like building off what you were saying, how, yes, increase in integrity, but you can't stop there. And it's also, this room is the one, you know, are the ones who could be modeling, right, and, and living. And it really, you know, sets, sets the tone for, for everybody else. Okay. So, probably a lot of ideas swirling, which is great, because this is where we've been pretty divergent in our thinking in terms of, especially with think, see, feel, do, trying to get a lot of ideas on paper, right? We're getting a little bit more narrower, or we got a little bit more narrow with mission and vision. So what do we want our future to look like? What's our purpose as an organization? We just did an initial reflection on our values, and what we wanna hold true in terms of how we're conducting ourselves and approaching our work, right? Now we wanna get lower into the house in specific priority areas. Naturally, what comes along with discussions around priority areas, and I'm gonna define our terms here in a second. What do I mean by priority? What we see with groups doing this kind of work is people jumping into specific actions, specific projects, right? This department should do X, and this is the specific metric. We, we absolutely need those things. We absolutely need those things. Those things are absolutely gonna be mentioned by probably most of you in five minutes. And that's fine, right? We wanna capture them. But what we're really trying to get at are priorities. Justin, what do we mean by priorities? Great question. So, we think about, so we're gonna shift from house to period. We can't stick to our architectural structures here. So priorities, very broad, okay? They, they provide strategic direction, but they are not at all prescriptive. They're not telling people how to do the work, right? In the current strategic plan, there are, if you open it up, you should have a copy of it, you'll see that there are column headers, once you get to the tables, about, I think it's like maybe three or four pages in. So the closest parallel that I saw, maybe it's page four. Oh, sorry, I'm way off.
You're four pages in, though.
Right, so you see those column headers, right? You see like family, community, engagement, workforce, success, continuous improvement. That's, that's the stuff of priorities, right? So an example would be, ensure all students graduate college and career-ready, which is essentially the intent of what we see there, right? That's what we mean by priority areas. We don't mean, we don't mean tier schools using district support formula and provide support based on specified. Right, that is intentionally wordy, right, and verbose. But that's not what we're getting into now. However, should that come up, let's capture it, okay? And then naturally, objectives are gonna come up. So it's, it's, it's normal for us to be like, okay, well, if we want students to graduate college and career-ready, right? Or all students define a pathway, right? That would really get to objective goals, because that's something that's pretty, pretty measurable, right? That's fine. Capture it, write it down, okay? We're not making any decisions today. The intent for today is to connect, collect an initial list, right? As really a synthesis of all the conversations we've had, okay? So this is, this is less scientific. So this is, this is less um scientific, okay? It's, it's more of an art right now. Are we gonna temper it and go back to the data and kind of rationalize our decision making based on data? Absolutely, right? But for now, we need to put some guide, we need to begin to put some guideposts in place, right? When we come back in May, the idea is, we have an initial set of priority areas, okay? You'll have reflected on these between now and then, and then you're working side by side with the chiefs to get to objectives, right? To get to actions, right, because they're the ones who are doing this work every single day, right, with, with schools, okay? So, in case that wasn't clear, a little bit more on, on priorities, what we mean. So just take a minute to, to check these out, right? Here's what they are, here's what they're not, here's what they do and don't do. The main thing I would call out is, they don't tell people how to do something, right, but they do give broad direction. And again, as these things come up, capture them, but just call it out, okay? The way that still reading for me. And I'll come back to this while, while you're working. So coming back to our visual from earlier, right? Today, we don't have the cabinet with us, we're really relying on data from different groups of people, from progress, uh, the progress monitoring data, right? Obviously, we have the board um here in present, and Dr. Bernier. Um, the cabinet will be with us in May, and that's where we're gonna really go deeper into these, into objectives, get into actions, okay? All that we're gonna do, we're gonna set up a poster on, sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna draw boxes onto that glass board right behind you. No one has to get up or anything, you can really, you can really sage receipts. Just thinking about, based on your, taking time to reflect, right, and we're gonna, we're gonna give about ten, fifteen minutes to reflect. How would you group different priority areas that are, that are coming into mind, right? So for example, and where, what I, what I encourage you to do is go back to the current strategic plan, because remember, we are, we are refreshing. Right, so at this point in our process, this is where we also wanna consider uh, family and community engagement, for example, or workforce success. Maybe you wanna spell that out a little bit more, okay? Maybe you wanna take a look at some of those initiatives and consider what we, our discussion today, right? And how does that translate to a refreshed priority statement, okay? They don't need to be perfect, we just wanna begin to get ideas on paper and start to bring some form and some shape to what the refresh might look like, okay? So, what you're gonna be doing is, on post-its, and this is the last time we're gonna use post-its for today, I promise, on post-its. Just, just labeling, is this a priority area that you think stakeholders are asking for? Or that you see very clearly from across all three groups, right? And by stakeholders, that might mean, for example, let's say that students are, are sharing in the data, and I know we wanna get school level data. In secondary, school is boring. The teacher data tells us, we think that students are generally engaged, right? The data, the academic data shows that in secondary school with math, for example, right? The data shows, well, if students were that engaged, then they would be doing better, right? They're saying they're bored, they're under, they're, they're not performing where we want them to, okay? Um, and then you also know from conversa, or sorry, from reflecting on the readout data that preparing students for career is critical, we know that. So like translating all of that, like we have data points to say like, okay, we know we wanna prioritize improving secondary, the secondary learning experience, for example. So improving the student experience in secondary school so that math goes up, right? Math goes well, that would be the qualifier that you wanna just label, but improving the secondary student experience, that might be a broad priority area, for example. You see, I was like kind of triangulating across like different parts of, no, losing you, okay?
I'm just sorry.
I'm copying these answers.
I'm just showing, I'm just having like this metacognitive moment where I'm saying like, okay, if I'm taking a step back, right, and I'm looking at uh, different data sets that we looked at today. One of them being secondary students reporting at a pretty high rate that they feel bored in school. I forget the exact number, I think it was like sixty-three percent, right? So we know that that's true. We also know that if we're looking at math scores, for example, that we would ex, in, in the spirit of excellence, right? That students could be doing and performing better, so it's another thing that's true, right? And again, it's just my, my personal thought process. At the same time, when we're looking at, uh, oh, and then I, I add more student data, right? So the extent to which as a learner, I feel that learning has been customized for me, or it's made differentiated. I forget the exact language of the question, but there's a question in there about, something about that, like learning is, is adapted for me, right? We see that students report that low, and teachers actually report that high, right? And what that's all amounting to, we see the lower math scores, we see students feeling bored, right? That led us to a conversation in this room about, well, we see this cliff between elementary and secondary of students feeling like really invested and excited about school, right? So a priority area, in my mind, I'm thinking like, okay, maybe a priority area could be rethinking, reimagining the secondary student experience, something like that. Is that, is it a little more clear?
She can explain it to me. I'm trying to soak this into you.
At, at the same time, in order for, you can start.
But I think it has to do with our first.
In order for me to follow that, I had to disregard what you have up on the screen.
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
I think that, I think there's a, I think if you're processing what's up on the screen.
Oh, sorry, yes. This, this is just for us, like as you're sharing things, right? So another, another example would be stakeholders, let's keep it simpler, scaffold, Justin. So, if we're looking at the boring date, like the, that question where students are saying it's boring, school is boring. That could immediately be a priority area. Students are saying school, like we're thinking, I'm thinking in my head, students are saying school is boring in secondary, priority. Uh, rethink the secondary student experience, reimagine the secondary student experience, great, put that there, okay? Now, with the, let's say that with the board, right, we see that, um, we, looking at the data, the academic data for math, again, I'll go back to math. That, um, math scores are low, and part of the reason we think that is because students are bored, because we deserve that, that data. That's already on my chart, right? So that gives me, that's saying like, okay, if I see low math scores and I know students are bored, then that's a second reason for me to think, okay. We really need, we really do need to think about the secondary student experience, because they're disengaged and their scores are suffering as a result of it, right? So when you see, it's, it's really an exercise in like where do you see congruence, but also if you see needs and asks from specifics stakeholders in groups. That's totally fine, right? We don't, we don't need to be finding the trifecta. There are cases when, and this is not what we're doing today, right, we're really just thinking like here and here, when you see boxes. Cause we don't have the cabinet with us, like they will be with us.
Okay, so you said go to the strategic, all of these, so we're looking at this, imagine them with these, what we first read, and then come up to that.
Initially, it's not strategies.
If, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, you, you have, you have really two, two jumping off points for writing priority statements. You could say, you know what? Um, essentially answer your question is yes, right? Because if we're saying that, um, family and community engagement, which we talked about a little bit, right? We actually didn't talk about it a ton today, it was mentioned like in the framing and how in our process, from a process perspective. It was mentioned in the context of, um, you know, the example that you gave, like maybe we can bring parents in for certain nights. So you might say like, you know what, actually in our conversation today, we didn't talk a ton about family and community engagement. That should be a priority, that's something that we wanna maintain for our current plan. Put, put it on, right? Or it could be some new thinking that came out of today, right? So, so now, we're, we're trying to decide, A, what do we wanna maintain from here, or adapt a little bit, right? Or B, is there any new thinking that is not captured in here, or could be rewritten to be more clear, right, and updated based on the needs, okay? If, if you're feeling confused, that's okay, Chris and I are gonna be walking around as you're, um, this is the hardest part, right? This is the hardest part.
So you basically were just what we think the priorities should be in the refresh plan.
Right, and it's like, who, who's telling that, are you, are you getting that from stakeholder data? Are you hearing that from, you know, is that some that like the board talked about too? That's it.
Are we using sticky notes?
Yes.
So where's it coming from? Stakeholder.
Everything you just said leads to that.
I was just going to suggest that, Dr. B, if we put the house back up, it might help.
So in what specific areas will we focus our attention to arrive at the worst possible system? If you have a priority, what's the priority, and in a sense, where did it come from? Did it come from stakeholder data?
Exactly.
Did it come?
Did it come from the previous plan? Did it come from our conversation today? Did it come from data?
So we'll go back to the beginning.
Yeah, yeah. And if it's helpful too, you could reference some of the stuff on, on the poster.
I just wrote our priorities, because now it's like, once we have our priorities, we can list the objective to meet that priority.
Are we working together?
Yes, we are. You're right, we're working together.
Right, well, yours is a priority, because I think this one hits on all of them. Like he was, he was saying. Josh was saying that, um, Josh was saying that, like little math scores and maybe I'll have connections between those things. To me, that all points back to the teacher in the classroom, which is about leading a minute retention. So, for me, the priority that touches every single, every single data point is ensuring that we have an effective, reliable teacher in every classroom throughout the entire school year. To me, that's a priority, if we can get an effective or highly effective teacher every night throughout the school year, then kids' math scores go up, kids are less bored.
That helps from each one of these.
Hundred percent, I, I think that, to me, that's the center of all of it.
Are we supposed to do the rest of it?
No, no, you're just writing, the goal, the goal is for us as a group to generate priorities.
Okay.
If, if an objective's coming, coming into your mind and you wanna capture it, just write it down, my ask is just that you label it. Or if it's an initiative, I just ask that you label it.
Leave it, label it as a priority.
Just, yeah, just write it, if like, if it's more of an initiative, right? So for example, if you wanted to do, like let's do nights where we bring families in and we teach them about X, Y, Z, right? Or we collaborate with them, that might be more of an initiative.
Students kindergarten, right?
Students kindergarten, right?
Right.
So what is the priority? As far as like, families, community.
Well, maybe defining what that looks like would help us, would help him to figure out what the objectives, the initiatives of the project should be. What, what is, what is his family and community engagement, what is that, what does that look like?
Right, and that's a, that's funny that you said it, cause I, I, good thing I went to class, I'll just tell you. Cause they've never seen it, what does that engage on me, just because you didn't see me in the classroom. Or at the school, does, yeah, does that make them not engage with them?
Children, hundred percent.
So I guess we have to figure out what does it look like in our, right? Cause I wasn't even thinking about that until they were speaking on.
So what do we want to ensure regarding parent engagement, what do we want to ensure?
But we know that the kids go back to these, because you're a part of them, so. We have that conversation that they're typical of, so. So, and if the kids right now have always a name. I'm gonna say, majority of them, because they have that.
Well, let's go back. We wanna make sure a respectful, safe, warm, welcoming, fair.
Because I'm.
Because every dollar pieces, it has to, for me, for me, to me, has to work on our efficiency.
It's the environment, the environment.
There's a dollar we can use to bolster salaries, bolster classroom materials.
So ensure a respectful initiative. What's left to this? Kids, what, what else was prioritized in our stakeholders in terms of?
So I summarized it, I mean, just alone, and then, and alone, and then you say all these things you just said, basically. Maybe I should put the word strong in there, I don't know.
Friendly?
That's all in your environment.
Well, I'm going through and seeing which ones weren't important, but for the parents and ensure a respectful, safe, warm, welcoming, fair, and friendly. See, I can't, I can't write. What's that?
If you have a sense of belonging, you're gonna do better, if you, if you feel that way.
What's that? Ensure a respectful, safe, warm, welcoming, fair, and friendly environment in our schools and district. I mean, just, listen, just out of this alone, do you have any idea how the initiatives, projects, and objectives? I mean, each one of these is gonna require him to do something different.
And there's some, there's some.
Completely different welcoming, which is really different.
This is always on, going to think of us anyway.
Where do we squeeze the tax dollar to have more?
Because our district is minority, majority, and all the children, and parents, and everything. I guess I'll go back to that too, where the, um, the, the, we'll be going this way, we're back.
Hundred percent, to me, that's what, I mean, who walks in twice or, oh, the need at home.
And again, we, we always look, they got, we're both coming up too, so what's gonna, what kind of, what's that?
Legal compliance, legal compliance is your problem, not ours, right? Right?
What?
Legal compliance.
Depends on who's being legally compliant.
How do we implement these things? The implementation, the legal implementation is your problem, not ours, we're big picture.
Our.
Yeah, I would say it's our problem, because they will always come back to the board in terms of what the board did, what, when, where.
Yes, but in, but in terms of drafting, what the initiatives would be to get us there, that would be our work first, their.
Correct.
Right, just, cause I, if we're violating the law, really determines my head.
San Patrick, by the way, the day is international, be nice to.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Be kind to your attorney day. The second Tuesday of every April, Dr. B.
Yesterday was sibling day. My brothers and sisters texted me.
Mine left me alone, that's how.
Just to be talking to two.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, um, all right, now, in terms of the.
Post, the post over world. I know it's.
So hard to be nice to you, Sam.
It's because I think it's, you know, the, the teachers used to really be like able to.
Thank you, I didn't need to look at my.
Autonomous.
Yeah, you could actually teach, it'd be funny, but now it's like, they're kind of afraid to teach. What can I, do you know what I'm saying? Yeah, so you could be like.
I see, writing's starting to slow down, but some people are still writing, so that's, that's great. So I'll just give an overview, keep writing. I'll give an overview of what we're gonna do. So Chris and I are gonna be co-facilitating here. We're gonna ask people to share. I'll start with one person. What we're trying to do is see like where are there synergies? So for example, so one person will share, and then we're gonna wanna know, does anybody have something similar? Our goal is to create some affinity groups of priority ideas essentially. Or if there's objectives aligned to them, or initiatives that you thought of, that's fine, we'll cluster them in, right? That's the goal, right? Because again, we wanna leave with an initial list. And then our work afterwards, Chris and I is going to be, to synthesize it a bit more and then give it back to you. Does this sound right? Is this what we heard? Is this what the conversation was in the room? Before we give it to different advisory groups to weigh in and chiefs, okay? So with that, let's start. Can somebody just start to share? What's one of the priorities that just came to mind?
A fully staffed district of administration and teachers.
Fully staffed district, okay. What were the other, other, did anybody else write anything else down related to staffing?
Teacher retention, I wrote that down.
Teacher retention as a priority, okay.
Uniform teacher.
Well, that would come up.
We have, we have.
Meaning like, oh, hang on a second, yeah, go ahead.
Uniformed teacher and staff retention, meaning like some schools are, yeah, some.
Understaffed or.
Are very great about retention, others are uniform, but not just the total number.
I see, because stability and more uniformity and predictability across the organization. Okay, Chris, you good?
I'm just getting from you.
You have some over here too.
Ensure that we have an effective or highly effective teacher in every classroom throughout the entire school year.
Highly effective teacher every classroom, entire year. Great, yes.
So I would add to that, but it's slightly different. Teachers feel they have the skills and knowledge to be effective.
Teachers feel they have the skills and knowledge to be effective, okay. So you put that still into the staff.
On the big picture, I, I think it goes even further than teachers. I mean, in our administration, it's hard for the legal department and the administration to staff up all their different people, like in IT and things like that. I mean, we're short people everywhere.
Yeah.
You know, so it needs to be retention of all employees are fully staffed and qualified like that.
Well, actually, that's our fault because we're not raising up enough the children to come, to come back and work in this school.
For whatever, but I, I'm trying to look at the big picture. The others would be more initiative, I think.
I understand. So, so you're thinking about just staffing broadly across all, all functional areas of the district?
For us to be a world-class system, we're gonna be a full.
Okay.
I get that, but can I ask a question?
Yes.
I agree with you entirely, but as I look back at the community feedback that we got, I didn't see any tie into that. And weren't we supposed to have this to support the that?
No, just indicate where they.
I, I would, I would say, I, I, I hear your point, right? Like from, from that survey data, we don't see that from readout though, uh, like certain departments, that, that was coming up.
Okay, all right.
I, I hear your point though, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so anything else related to staffing, retention? We started to get a little bit into professional development, people feeling equipped, um, and like having.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
Great, great, okay, excellent. All right, uh, somebody else, can you share another priority that came to mind? That you wrote down. And if you wrote down a single post-it, you wanna hand it up to us, great. If not, Chris is writing feverishly to capture the conversation.
That was really all encompassing.
Details.
Okay, so ensuring respectful, safe, warm, welcoming, fair, and friendly environment, so this is really getting at environment, culture. Uh, schools, yes, but also district office, right, okay.
And we felt like, like for example, welcoming encompasses the ELL issue that we've discussed, because if you have an environment where parents who don't speak English as a first language can walk into a school and communicate in their native language, then they're gonna feel welcome.
I think we should call that separately too.
We felt like that sort of encompassed the highlights of each one of the feedback groups.
No, I had something in a different.
Different category, okay.
Well, and I, and to add to Ms. Petrikos is I, I had put strong inclusive learning environment. So that inclusive is what I think you're really honing in on.
Okay.
Give me your sticker.
Sure.
Mine was kind of towards yours in the beginning where I said culture, trust, transparency, professionalism.
Okay, so building on some of the values, right, right? Trust, transparency, professionalism. You got that?
Yep.
Yeah, that's sound.
My hand is terrible.
Okay. Thank you, priority. That would be an answer. Uh, all right, other, other priorities that came up, so, because so far we've got a grouping around staffing, retention, uh, people feeling equipped. We have another one about school climate, culture, and organizational climate and culture. Including, right, ELL students and their families feeling welcomed, right, invited to participate. What's this?
That's with environment and.
Environment. Okay.
That kind of was a playoff of yours, where you said, reimagined the secondary experience.
Ah, okay, so there's new ones to that.
Right.
Okay, so this is ensuring each child has access to an engaging classroom environment, uh, environments and materials, okay. So whereas, so whereas like the, the recent shares about, yes, we have inclusive learning environments, but at a priority level, it's really about, um, school and district offices, right? The next layer down for that, from that would be the classroom level, exactly, right?
And that addresses the boring piece.
Right, like that's where most likely, right, if there was something more initiatives or objectives tied to that, they'd be nested over there, okay, yes.
So talking about district sustainability, to me, that's about how we allocate resources, money. So we need to, um, for, for every dollar allocated, we need to document it, test it, and validate it on a regular basis. And that means looking for efficacy, um, efficiency and effectiveness of the investment on a regular basis. That is something we do not do now. And I think that is something the community especially needs to see, even though it's not referenced.
Can I take that?
So, yeah.
Which gets out the accountability value.
Right.
It is definitely something.
Anything else related to sustainability or getting into, really getting into, uh, the use of resources, financial resources? Do we have anything related to that, or on the accountability side?
We didn't write this down, and it's not for either one of those, but technology, the appropriate use and provision of technology along with, um, safety and security surrounding it.
Okay.
Um, that came up in these, didn't, didn't these talk about?
Mm-hmm.
Digital tools to help me learn. I think, I think teachers can use them as tools to teach and to learn.
Right. But, but, and, and what you're calling out as well is, um, just being intentional about the safe use of these tools, okay.
So I'm really struggling with the difference between priority and objective. I think most of mine, you said they might be priority, but I think they're objective. Students are kindergarten ready, third graders read, are able to read for content. We, all students graduate with a plan. Um, achievement, ability gaps are closed. Demographic differences are eliminated.
Yeah.
Post-COVID world skills are integrated into the classroom environment.
So those could be nested under college and career ready, for example, right? If you want to.
College careers to the achievement.
Exactly.
Layer. Those align in a large, maybe a larger bar.
Yeah.
Because you could measure each of those.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I had a, one kind of goes off culture from before, consistent discipline across the board, this section of it.
Okay.
The, the board meaning the, the system.
Sure, 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 not the board, it's just across the system, yeah.
Awesome.
Was there anything else about culture, passion culture, or? What else do you have written down that we haven't talked about and brought to the surface yet?
Equitable. I think equitable culture, I mean, making sure that it's, well, it's kind of what he just said, well, that's discipline, but I mean that.
Like, from a consistency standpoint?
Yes, across the, across the district.
Okay.
That everybody has the same resources, and that's very difficult to do sometimes.
You don't want to have the same resources, you want the resources you need that you're near to take another population.
Yeah, the support that's needed in whatever district, I mean, whatever school.
Right, yeah.
Foster connection between families and the schools. Um, some schools are really good at that, and some doesn't feel like, again, that's a lot obviously on what the parent takes out of it, but it feels like some schools are, are better inviting and foster that connection, have more things with their families than other ones do.
Yeah, some schools do it better, I mean, and they're not, they're sharing their knowledge.
Yeah.
Or that, well, that's back to telling the story, right?
Yeah.
We don't tell our story, I, I don't feel effectively, where people understand, the community understands our needs, because we do have a need and we don't really express it well, I don't think, and that's telling that story.
That, but it's also about how, you know, expectations for leadership. Because different principals, you talk about different principals have different relationships with their community and have different levels of support.
Yep, yep.
The, the question is, is that an expectation of a principal, and at what point do we, um, introduce that as, as an expectation? Or is it not? And do we use people like Ann, Adam Alloy to do that instead of principals? You know, where does that responsibility lie?
Well, and I think that also depends on the level, the level of education, right? Because your elementary principal is not necessarily the face of the school as much as your high school principal is. Your high school principal is, I mean, in a sterile, the high school principal's always at town council meetings because they're recognizing his students. You don't see that at time much, you know what I mean? So it depends on the level as well.
No, I think that, well, that's, you don't think that the elementary school principals are, I think they are definitely the face of, as far as parents are concerned.
Of the school, at the school, of the school, at the school.
Of the school, of the parents of the school. The commu, the school community itself.
At the school, right, correct, they're, they're very involved, I would say so too.
And, and I, I, yeah, so I think that the community sees all the principals regard, high school, because there are all different kinds of games, stuff like that maybe. But as far as the middle school, and all the schools that my kids have ever been engaged, I've always known all the principals. And they're always very visible at the bus lines or everywhere, so the, the parents do know, and PTAs or PTOs, whatever you wanna call them now. They're very much, um, there as well, so I, I think that, I think they're the same as high school.
Petrika has a point though, but when you come to the political and the business community, the high school, I think, is looked more at, not more favorably, but they're more looked at because, you know, you've got these kids about to graduate and go to college, you see all that all the time, they're going into the workforce. Of course, like you say, all the football teams, the basketball teams, you don't get all that recognition that you do at an elementary school. That doesn't mean there aren't more parents involved in the elementary school, but.
I'm gonna have to disagree with you. Well, and that's because I, I've seen, I've been at elementary schools, you have the Rotary Club, you get Kiwanis, you got all these clubs that are very in tune, do our sensory rooms at our elementary schools. So I believe that, it depends on the individual and how much effort they put up into it as well.
You're, you are in an area where there are lots of neighborhood schools. That's very different than parts of the county that are not neighborhood schools. So there, you know, there is a different level of parent investment depending on accessibility of the school to the family.
But we do all agree that the principal is more important than anyone here in this room, as far as making it successful.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I think that's the key.
Yep.
Okay.
Armour kind of started to get to something I brought up, I said, you know, kind of goes community and whatever, better relationship with business, community organizations. So I, I know that's just one I've heard a lot from stakeholders in fact, so.
Yeah, relationships are huge.
Yeah.
And not every principal takes it that step further at some schools.
Yeah.
That to have those relationships and engaging with those relationships wherever they're at, I mean, I didn't realize that the, the, um, principal at Vinita goes to those meetings, but I don't know that Dunbar and Fort Myers are going to our city council meeting, so, so that, you know what I'm saying? So there's that expect, what's our expectation? Did somebody said something to that?
When I say they're going, I, I, what I mean is the students are receiving awards from the council. So the council brings, recognizes students, and of course, the principal goes with them, that's what I think, I don't mean, but I do like the, the whole Rotary thing. I think there was a little push there for a little while to get our principals to join the Rotaries, because that's a great way to really have tentacles out into the community if they're showing up at Rotary meetings each week. Anyways, we're in initiatives and we're way out of priorities.
We knew that would happen. Um, I'm gonna, I'm adding to yours also, sticking into the, the idea of the county commission in bringing them, like, that's very much in the spirit, I think, of what you're talking about, right?
You and I actually talked about that.
Right, like, how do we, like, what is the, um, here. And what, and what that made me think about too, Dr. Bernier, if I, tell me if I remember it correctly. Before, we were talking, this is in a slightly different context. I think you were talking about lesson planning sometime in the morning and the idea of like working on the work, like, how do, like, are, are, like, are we reflective on the structures that we use to do our work? Are we intentional about the way that we design them? I'm also, the idea of cadence is also sticking with me. Um, and then proactive, are we using our strategic plan to be proactive? What I'm getting at is, a lot of these are, are the whats, like, what, what should we be doing as a, and, which is, which is, I would expect that. Is there also a dimension, and what, what I'm thinking about is like, where is a dimension of, of how we do our work and does that deserve, is that assumed through our values and like the way that we approach our work? Or does that need to be, might that be a priority area in terms of thinking about, because there is data from a number of chiefs specifically about lack of systems. Part of that, of course, is due to, um, staffing, or people feeling that their department might, might be understaffed, and so therefore, they don't have the space and time.
Nice catch, right.
On the other hand.
Right.
Some departments, some departments, so this is a different aspect, different look at, looking at it from a different side. Some departments are not understaffed, they're not using current practices
Yes.
to become more efficient. Now, some are maximizing their efficiency, but some are not, and that's.
And some sort of.
And that goes back to how we use resources.
Exactly.
You have all, you have all three things present at the central office. You have parts of the organization that need to be retooled, and, and efficiencies need to be driven. You also need executive leadership in some of those areas. You have areas where there's strength, but a lack of system. You might have the right people, and you might now have the right leader, but what that division is lacking is the right systems, which now a chief operation officer is working on. Then you also have departments and divisions, when you compare them to a hundred thousand seat system, where we have some problems. So I'm jumping to some initiatives or just some thoughts.
Yeah.
To make you understand I'm listening to you. I, I'm, I think, I was surprised that speak up, listen up didn't come up. So if we're gonna attach culture, I think we name it in the strategic plan, because if it's named there, we own it there.
I love that.
Right? The other piece is, we want our employees, and we want our principals, and we want other people to behave better, right? Part of that is setting expectation, professional development, and other things. But another piece is having a large enough investigatory arm to do that work. We want consistency and discipline. We have a hundred thousand seat system, and we currently have no one in charge of student discipline investigations and ensuring that due process is done, because we made him the principal in another school building temporarily. But even if I bring him back, is one enough in a hundred thousand seat system? And I think if you're being candid and honest, we know. And I've used this out loud, so the community may hear it for the first time from me. What I'm trying to be very cognizant of, for all of you, is when, when, when a group of teenagers stop at the red light and they do the fire drill. I know we do that, kids don't do that, kids are listening, they don't have the first clue what I'm talking about. That's the disorganization of a department. Adding more people to that disorganization just creates a better red light drill, right? We have, adding people when we know the systems are tight, and we've realized some of the operational efficiencies is when you begin to look at how do we add and where do we add, right? So like in ops, they're starting to get to all their systems approaches because of leadership there. We may turn up the need for some additional people, i.e. in the program management. We have very few program managers there. And to do some of the work we do, takes it, starts with somebody saying, okay, here's the start of it, here's the end of it, and here's the Gantt chart all the way down with all the deadlines, so we actually reach the outcome, and not just turn it over, but actively manage that plan to consistently show up and say, we're on schedule, we're behind schedule, what are you gonna do to catch up? So these are all really valuable, this is really valuable feedback to myself and, you know, to Michael and to Kathy, um, regarding, I can see the, I can see the larger packages that these get wrapped up in, for lack of a better term.
Just, yeah, rolled up into a nested.
Nested. Nested, I like, I like that word, that's better.
Okay.
That's why we hired you.
So are we maximizing our employees to their, 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 their best potential as well?
I think in some cases, yes. In some cases, we are over maximizing them. They have, there's no way to get the work done that they're being asked to do. In other cases, no, we're not maximizing everything that we should be.
That's your job.
Yes, it is. It is my job to bring the solution, figure out where each department is and bring the appropriate solutions to those three different types of.
Thank you.
Locations.
Okay. Any final thoughts for, for the time being right now on priority areas?
Well, we didn't mention safety at all.
No.
Did I mention safety at all?
I, we did, we did.
I'm sure it was, yeah, okay, sorry. Yeah, that was in the, we had it here. That was in the learning environment.
Yeah.
The first one I was shared actually was learning environment.
That's true.
Yep, it was mentioned. Yes.
I don't sure. This goes in with this or not, it's one I keep coming back to today that I saw in the statistics.
Okay.
And I, I wrote down increase and then quotes lessons that made me want to learn new things, like have that quotes. That one keeps hitting me today. It goes along.
Since we're had lessons that made you wanna learn new things?
Yes, that one, that keeps coming back to me today, no matter how many times I've read this. So that, from elementary to middle and high school, that's the one that keeps coming back to me.
Well, right, and translating that into priorities, like, learning feels like relevant or aligned to my pathway, whatever, like the language is. But that's what you're hitting on essentially. Cause that's a very staggering stat right there, right? So we, we definitely wanna dive into like across schools what that looks like, but I mean, I mean, rather than a hundred percent. So we know, um, going back to our Zoom activity, we're doing all the pictures. Dr. Bernier, something that you did say was like, well, you know, the difference here is that like we don't know with strategic planning, we don't know what all the parts are, we don't know what all the pieces are. Sometimes it gets messy, now I'm adding, adding in my own. It, it can be a messy process, right? And then the other thing too is as we talk to each other and we learn from each other perspectives, it leads to new thoughts and ideas. And that's gonna happen again with the next cycle when we're synthesizing these initial groups, right? I know, we know that they look messy now, but we're gonna clean them up, right? We're gonna share them back to you to validate, is this what we heard? Is this accurate given what we talked about? Is this accurate when we go back to the data? And we, we, we need to go deeper, right? So that's the next step for, for Chris and I, uh, and our team. And so leading us through, okay, we're really getting, uh, to closing out for today, right? And thinking about where we're going next. So today what we did, just going back to our, our purpose and our objectives, we took time to reflect on the current state. Okay, we did that through looking at, um, interview notes, right? And that synthesis from the board, from cabinet and from chiefs. We also did that by looking at the accreditation surveys from students, from educators, from families. Uh, we looked at high level performance data, right, from the Department of Education about the district. And then we used that reflection to begin to think about like, what do we want to be true for learners? So think, see, feel, do, right? So that began to give us some, some direction and some guideposts there. We spent some time calibrating on vision and mission, right? And again, we're, we're refreshing here, we're not necessarily trying to rewrite anything from scratch. And so that's another, uh, piece of action step for our team, for the education element team to go back and think about, okay, what were the notes that we collected, what might we wanna change, if anything, right? Or maybe it's more about, hey, we need to really just define what we mean by world class. And we need to get the word students in there, okay? Uh, and then finally, we just rounded out right now with beginning to identify some initial focus areas. Those are going to become our, our initial list, like we have that, right? So we have to parse through them, say, okay, these are maybe more objectives. But then also part of our job is saying, and your job is telling us, we really have these gaps, right? Uh, for example, you're like, well, we didn't talk about safety and it's like, that's a good catch because we absolutely didn't talk about it. But we checked ourselves, we have safety, right? So we, we need to do another round of that. And it's, we're, we're, we're nowhere near finished with our refresh, right? We're gonna do several more rounds, um, in critical thinking and critical reflection before we, we finalize this, okay? So from a process standpoint, uh, we're just about done with our first day, right? Uh, there's gonna be, what's not reflected here is all the in-between work, much of which I just kind of characterized and listed out, right? A part of that is gonna be, is gonna look like Chris and I joining with some of the advisory groups, saying, like taking picture, like sharing a picture of this and like, hey, this is where we started, we, there's a lot of input, it's from these data sets. Tell us what you think, like this is, this is initial list of priorities, like what's missing? What might some objectives initiatives be? And then our job is to bring that back to you when we come together in May. And then also after you have a chance to look at any notes, right, and synthesis that we have from mission, vision, values, we wanna collect feedback on that as well from the different advisors. Uh, we don't have the specific date yet, as far as I understand for, uh, I know by the end of June, we wanna have our refresh plan ready to go. Uh, but that specific date, TTD, okay? Uh, I just spoke through that, but again, like our, our full intent is to get with the advisory groups to get feedback. Uh, and that's the next sort of business for us, really starting this week. So, and actually right after this, Chris and I will begin to debrief and begin to get ready to reach out to these groups, um, line, line up all those activities and make sure we're getting their input, okay? And with that, our, our final ask for you does not include post-its, but it does include a survey. So we, we wanna get better for next time. Obviously, we're gonna be with a larger group, so therefore we'll, we'll be in a, a larger group. But we do want some feedback from you, we really value that, so we can improve our facilitation, our planning, our communication around the event. And, and before we do that, I wanna open it up to the group for any final thoughts before we leave and then pass it to you, Dr. Bernier, for the final comment. Any closing thoughts for anybody before we grab up?
I just appreciate that you didn't come in with a canned, um, program. You made it, uh, specific to Lee County and I appreciate that. Except for a lot of these things that were just canned and resulted in canned results. But this felt like this was right for Lee County, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm sort of excited since I didn't have anything to do with the previous strategic plan. To be involved in this and be involved in the refresh, I'm sure. The other board, new board members feel the same, so it's a good job.
Good. And we, we appreciate you just embracing our facilitation and the different exercises and methods we know. There's a lot of thinking that we, we ask you to do and, and we do appreciate it. We know it's, it's hard work, right, and, and, and get messy, but we're glad to be doing it, so.
Will you send the survey to us?
Uh, yeah, we can, we can send it to you. You can, you can either access it through this billie or we can email it to you right now.
I just took a picture of it.
Um.
Yeah, yeah. We can send, we can email it to you.
I love the email.
No problems.
Cause I forget.
No problems, we can email it to you.
Trust, I'll get an email.
And you don't have to do it now, just, yeah. If you can do it by the end of the week, we'll, we'll make sure it gets to you through email, okay? Uh, Dr. Bernier, is there any closing?
I just have a couple remarks. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the, the hard work and planning that went into this. Dr. Savage, he really hasn't been in the room much. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes with Dr. Savage sending along this work up. And sometimes I think people wonder, sometimes what people do. He, he's been really busy and, and really active in, in doing this and some of the other work. I also believe I need to thank all of you. This is, all of you at some level were invested in this or, or used it as a, as a campaign area and now it's part of your work to look towards what we wanna do. I think it was important to come back, refresh it with what the district's been through. And then set a timeframe with our, with new data to continue to move forward. So, and this will align into my evaluation and that piece that we use the entry plan for. This is what will fill in that gap surrounding what the board's expectations are of the superintendent. I think for the community that's been listening, they also have to be aware that no decisions have been made today. This wasn't, this wasn't a voting item. The strategic plan eventually will be formulated into a document. It'll be brought before the board for review and for a vote to adopt it. But none of that occurred today. I just, I don't know who from the public may be listening. But I think it's incredibly important that we've captured a lot of ideas and a lot of thinking. Um, we're gonna work with our advisory committees and continue to work with the board in an additional retreat. And then we'll continue to work towards that June deadline for, for a strategic plan. But I just can't thank you enough for your participation and your help, today's gonna be a long day. But, um, thank you very much for your commitment to this and your commitment moving forward. I think it's the right work at the right time to set a tone going into next year, so thank you.
We will hear that survey too, but we, we appreciate you, thank you for your time to the task.